How's the sleeping situation? So little asleep. I think so, you know they live. Mine's still not asleep.
Huh?
I didn't have a full night's sleep for two and a half years after him was born.
I don't want any of y'all to wind up after one baby's that y'all have at home.
That's your problem.
Yeah, I told my wife you're not having too much.
Is that how it happened today?
That's how it happened. That's my story.
Yeah, we got movies.
Yes.
For what I have in more of a Saturday, let's probably just play baseball Saturday.
Would you add vow for a moment prayer? Dear Lord, thank you so much for the beautiful day you've given us. We're thankful for another opportunity to live. And Lord, we pray you'd use us tonight and use us each and every day as we live. Father, let us be vessels and instruments, Father, to get your work accomplished on this earth. Lord, we are so blessed. We just can't thank you enough for all your goodness to us. Pray, Lord, you be in our meeting this evening. Give us wisdom as we conduct the business of our city and our town. We thank for all our citizens, and Lord, we're thankful for safety. And we ask you continue to watch over and care for us as the severe weather season approaches. These things we ask in your name. Amen.
Everybody place the flag. Pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I don't have any official business tonight. I do want to make a couple announcements. We've got a new face here at the table. Our city clerk, Kelly Frazier. We're looking forward to working with her and sending us the sign for everybody. Got new welcome signs on four corners of the city. On thirty-five, seventy-five, Kay Giffey and the beautification. Ford done a great job of that. Think you'll have to repaint the letters, isn't that right?
Yep. I'm okay.
It looks good. Looks very good. Also, the fire department, and I meant to get you guys the paperwork. I will do that this week. Fire Department final ISO report come back. They were issued a flat four, which is an improvement. Insurance companies, and I talked to the fire chief earlier today. He had something, his offer today has something going on and couldn't make it. I will get him to come and explain further. But the insurance companies that recognize that new rating, their customers should see a reduction in their premiums. That's all I got.
And will our Dean back still?
No, no doubt.
The only, I have two things. That Brian James, we had talked about redoing those sewer bonds. And I think they're wanting to have a meeting Thursday. And go ahead and get that over with. You know, the signing of the bonds and all that. Is that, is that okay to do that Thursday afternoon? That's the day that they, that's the day that they wanted to do it. Because I think they're doing their final adjustments that day on the bonds.
Yeah.
Have you talked to them?
Yeah, Brian called it today. I think Thursday's the quickest we can do it. The only, if we, if we go past Thursday, it's not really a problem going past Thursday. We've just got the risk of the interest rate fluctuating. And I don't, you know, it's anybody's guess as what kind of risk that is. You know, I don't mind Thursday. Thursday's finally. We can do it two different ways. We can do a special meeting, or we can pick time on Thursday. And I believe I'm correct on this. Pick time on Thursday and adjourn this meeting past that time. This meeting will actually adjourn on Thursday. We wouldn't have to call another meeting.
Yeah.
That'll catch you guys up.
Okay, we better just wait, we've done, done more.
Yeah.
They'll pay an extra payday.
That's what Brian James suggested.
However, you guys will do that.
I know they, I talked to Brian today and they prefer us adjourn it Thursday.
The other thing is just a reminder of the tornado, DeKalb County tornado memorial service Saturday, one o'clock. And I think they, did they, papers might have been there. Everybody's invited to come.
What time Thursday?
Says one PM.
That's Saturday. I mean, through the, through the day. Thursday. Got something y'all choose? Text, email, or something?
We need to go ahead and say it. I prefer it to be at four. I don't know if everybody can make it then. What's your schedule?
You never know. I don't know Thursday yet, but I.
I too would prefer four o'clock.
Four will be fine at PM.
Now, if I'm not mistaken, my softball team has a game, but it's not until you're five thirty or six forty-five. So four o'clock definitely works best for me.
Same, maybe watering the fields anyway. Just four AM.
Yep.
I want to pass a resolution stating for, what it is, we got four sets of bleachers. It's old, out of date and everything, appeared to be building drains. And they told us before we could even use them, we'd have to have handcuffs put on, handrails put on and that. But the town of Idar had approached us wanting to buy those bleachers. And we got what we think is a fair price for them. And I called the league and got the best way to do that, made a pass a resolution so we can sell it to them.
Is it basically deeming that surplus?
It's no longer needed surplus or useful, for a useful public purpose. Just gentlemen. That's all I got.
The city judge was not posted when we had approved for it to be posted. So there's some delay in applicants coming in. I forwarded all the applications that I've received thus far. We can't do this without approving it. But there's just a generic letter that we had all kind of said that we wanted to go out to all applicants that had showed interest in the city clerk position, just to kind of thank them for applying to keep up with the website for new jobs. I have annexed the air conditioner update because I thought there might be a chance that we have to replace the air conditioning units in the annex building in the police department. But I spoke with the guy today and he said that he really thinks that going in there and doing a good, clean system. And then there's also a position in the basement where it's not attached appropriately. And between some pool and some coil, there's water draining. Did he talk to you about that? Okay, so he said he's going to fix that too. And it should be a minimal, well, I say minimal, it's going to be around five hundred dollars. But hopefully that will also get some of the leaking fixed because we're having leaks like crazy in the annex. And then we'll be able to address and check the walls for mold at that point. Centers, did you have a safety coordinator update that you wanted to give the council?
Yes, if we could.
Yeah, I'm pretty much done. Well, let me say this first. We had passed the SOP. This is just an update, that we had passed the police SOP last June seventeenth of two thousand thirteen is the minutes we had passed the police SOP. We're understaffed right now in our police department. And so a way that we could supplement some of the working hours and kind of save costs is just like the fire department has volunteer firefighters. This is a way to get reserve law enforcement. And we're able to do that under Alabama Code eleven forty-three two ten. If anybody is interested to go look that up, or I have it sitting right here. But that's all. So I would like for our safety coordinator to update us on anything that's going on quickly.
We just got our discount last week on our rate was ten percent. The mayor got a copy of it and I did.
Discount on what?
On our insurance rate from municipal league. Insurance for the total for the city came to you. And then I got a copy. It says one was mailed to the mayor and then I received a copy of it. But I didn't bring it when I said to sell our award, but I don't have it. But, but we got that ten percent. We, of course, updated some of the policies as far as just having to put my name in or the state coordinator's name in some of them issues. But medical protocols getting some update. That came in good as we had Officer Snag got injured in that accident the other day. Or it wasn't accidents, where the gentleman ran over your mon, suspicious vehicle. Y'all remember about that? Turned that into the insurance. He had about sixteen hundred dollars worth of damage to his uniform. Of course, there'll be a thousand dollar deductible. I haven't gone. I really don't know what that cost to recover that liability part, maybe.
What's the total cost to the?
Sixteen hundred dollars. He just got the new radio, the new camera. We added up the mic for the camera for the car. I just bought him a new holster the day before.
You said it was a thousand dollar deductible?
Thousand dollars, so it'd be right at sixteen hundred. If we replaced all of it, so. Some of it I can, I've got, you know, a holster and stuff like that I could, you know.
And that's minimal.
But.
Those holsters, so they'd be minimal.
Yeah, he's just being thankful, you know, we're going tomorrow. I'm gonna just throw this to, do an interview with the gentleman that ran over. Chattanooga got him Thursday. And he's charged five families up there. And with our four, we'll be charging them. And Walmart, he's, he's here everywhere in the past, what, two weeks, Kentucky, Tennessee, Pigeon Forge, he missed a trip to Pigeon Forge. But anyway, we're going tomorrow to our party. I went and interviewed. But it'll be a while before he gets back to our state. But Snag back at work, that's what I want to say today. He came back. So he is very blessed to sit that way. If you look at the, how he was running over, where he skidded up the highway and was drugged. So it was, he could have been back. But his equipment took the blind of it. But the medical, you know, as far as that, the drug policy, it's, it's a, to date, changed the name, stuff like that. Mayor, we got another little incident. One of the cars got backed into, mayor. If anything's been said to the council, one of the police cars got damaged. It was headed to a town in the top of the mountain. Thousand dollar deductible on it, but I think about six hundred dollars we paid it out. So other than that, that's what we're on insurance. Trying to get some of the, some of the things changed. But I'll get with the mayor. There's nothing that won't change that he won't look at. Other than that, I guess it's the officer sort of putting it back on his gun belt, stuff like that. Like I said, the new camera and all got destroyed. It's boxed up in a box, so if that's all I had to worry about, we'd be okay. Don't think, well, that's all it was. But we're going to be talking to that gentleman tomorrow.
If you don't have one in county?
Yes.
Beer court.
I just want to make sure that we piggyback on what you were saying about Kay and the beautification. We need to make sure those signs are on our insurance. Is that just something we can just take care of administratively rather than make a motion for that?
Yeah, clerk. Kelly, could you get the insurance part again?
We just need to make sure they're added because that's why we have insurance money to pay for one of those. We need to make sure it's been replaced. And also, can we let Kay make an add-on of the clock, papers and that kind of stuff? Just to bring everybody up to speed on what they've been doing with that?
We took up all the papers that were already down. And we got Jamie Wisner to come and redo it because we had forty-two that we added. We added twenty-two with the names and we added twenty blanks. So we've got it worked out that if you go look at it, well, it's got plastic over it. I think it's still, we put, we made it a more semi-permanent. We poured concrete, then we put it on that backer board. Then we caulked it with black caulk. So then if we ever do get a new city hall, then what we're going to do is cut the caulking out and we can move it. We did, up one side, we did Ransville City Council. We did five with the names on the other side. We weren't going to keep them all together, but the way it worked out with blanks, we could. So on the other side, it says Ransville City Council and it's got the names. So then as people want to add on, we've got about four to ten blanks that we can add names to if the council ever changes. Because the way we did that is like when you guys were elected, what year you were elected, we put your name on there. And you know, if you were re-elected, we wouldn't add the names because of just one time. So everybody's names, it's nineteen fifty-six, it's down there now. So all of them, excuse me, are on there. And we've got those twenty blanks and that if anybody now would like to purchase one, we can have someone come up there and etch the names in the remaining twenty. So if anybody, and there's one that we've done sold. Somebody's going to etch it, the guy, I talked to Kerry Chandler. And so he's got a man that's got the stuff. He's going to match the lettering and come up there and do it. So if anybody wants one, we'll just have to find out how much it costs to, to do the engraving and all that. They're working on that. And I think it'll look, it's going to look a lot better. It went closer to the road, so to make it look uniformed and stuff. So it looks really nice up there now.
Thank you for all that. And we could also make sure the clock is on the, on the insurance policy. Clock in the signs. That's all.
I have a few recommendations from Ricky Dobbin's, the department head of the Streets of Sanitation. As you're aware, we have posted four positions within that division. One of the jobs that was posted was mechanic's position. It is, Mr. Dobbin's recommendation that we award that job to Tommy Knops and change it from a forty-hour position that's being paid fifteen dollars an hour to a part-time position that's thirty-six hours at ten dollars and fifty-two cents. So there's some substantial savings the city will realize in that move. Mr. Knops was functioning as the backup driver and general laborer. The backup driver and general labor position would come available if Mr. Knops is awarded that position. And it is under the recommendation of Mr. Dobbin's that Mr. Ricky Campbell be awarded the backup driver and general labor position. Mr. Campbell's currently functions as a roll-off driver. So that would open up a position for a roll-up dropper. And it is Mr. Dobbin's recommendation that Mr. Stephen Pike be awarded that position. And right now, Mr. Pike is a residential sanitation driver. That would leave that position open and that would be the one that would be filled from the general public. And we are now accepting applications in on that position up there. Mayor, there, there won't be a vote on this. We will just ask that you would take Mr. Dobbin's recommendations and make the appropriate changes. We have two rooms that really would not be renovated in the old Wiltley Post Building. The front portion is currently, bits will be out on that to renovate that for the court annex. And the back half will be a council chamber, court chambers. But on the back end of that, there'll be two rooms. One is going to be used as a municipal, municipal board meeting room. Any of the municipal boards will have access to that small meeting room, whether it's the historical preservation committee, whether it's the beautification committee, the events committee, the Arbor Day tree committee. It would just be a room dedicated for municipal boards. And right off of that room is a, is actually the old, I guess it would be the cooler for, was it Green Gardens? And that's going to be used for the Ransville Historical Preservation Committee's archives. It, it will be locked. Now, the reason I mention these two items is that there is an opportunity that we could honor a citizen of Ransville and have those rooms named after that person. Sort of like at the Tom Bebel Center, you have the Joe Bowman Room. And Mr. Bowman sold insurance and baseball cards. Would we want to just bestow that honor upon a, a citizen? Or would this be an opportunity that for us to sell the naming rights to someone? And if so, what would be a proper amount to, to sell the naming rights to those two rooms? Does anybody have any thoughts on that?
That's a lot to do. I mean, I, preferably for myself, I'd like to get it renovated, annex put in, court get set up, as get adjusted. And then from that point, once we're all settled in, then maybe talk about naming stuff. I mean, I like to a positive direction. I just would love for us to get started on renovations and move forward to get everybody, get the annex ladies out of that basement.
Well, the two rooms in question really would not require, it's not going to require any renovation. Their structure's going to be the same. The only thing that we have to do is put a door with a lock going into the historical archives. So I was hoping that we might be able to start using those meeting rooms as soon as possible. The naming of the thing, we can think about it. It's just something up for discussion. Let's ponder it for a while. If anybody has any good ideas for that, let's bring them back to this table. Mayor, do we have any, any type of progress being made with, with vacating the alleyways as a whole group here in Ransville? The reason I ask is that Mr. Dobbin's had, had located a, it's not technically a street, but it is a dirt road and right now it's on city property. It's a dirt road that goes to nowhere. And he thinks that that's something that we need to vacate and allow it to go back to its property owners. And the discussion had always been that, you know, instead of picking and choosing individual projects or alleyways to vacate, that we would want to, as a whole, do them all at once. And to decrease some of the liability that we have for structures that are on those alleyways.
Well, I'm with you on that. About a year ago, we had that discussion about vacating all the alleyways. There wasn't enough support here at this table a year ago to do that. I'm still in favor of that. The ones that I can think of, one for sure that the city might want to hang on to because the dumpster garbage truck still uses it. But especially the ones in residential areas and older neighborhoods. I'm all for it.
There, there's many alleyways, there's many proposed roads that had never been built that we actually still have.
There's probably not, how many that's there, we don't even know who is there.
Well, let, let me clarify. When it came up a year ago, I believe, I want to speak out of turn. I can say for myself, I was in support of vacating all of the alleyways, not picking and choosing. That, that was my particular opposition. So I'm all for vacating all of them unless there's like one that like utility we have to have. But I don't want to pick and choose.
They're opposed to dating the usage, we don't know.
It's from, I can't think of that street. It connects church and seventy-five. It runs up behind the later trailers.
Yes.
Storage units. That one I know for a fact is still being used, garbage trailer. It might be one that Broadway is using. What's the metal building? Kind of hidden down there?
Hope Pass.
Hope Pass, yeah. Look, it's a mission, mission storage building. I think they're using that. I think they have to have that because if I'm not wrong, I believe that this property would almost be landlocked without that alleyway. So there'd be no way, no legal way for the church to get to it. So that would not have to be kept. I don't know. Little, there's little things like that.
I, I think we had identified, and there's still probably some out there, up to about, almost thirty different proposed roads or alleyways that, that could be vacated all at once.
You could pull those out though, but you got to keep, you know, not do them. Take the rest of all of them. And that road he's talking about, it, it goes back in there and it's, it's just, it's just a dirt road. It stays tore up all the time, washes out. We have to go back and spend money on it just to keep it as a dirt road.
And it goes to nowhere.
Yeah.
Speaking of these alleyways, it might be a good time to look at this road, this extension off of Ranch. Is it Ranch Road that has food land?
That's what I was talking about.
Oh, that's the one you're, that's what you're talking about? That way of way back in there? Because we're definitely not keeping it up. Because we're definitely not keeping it up, and it's, y'all were just back there.
If you, you could about jump the ditch or something and come back out off behind that subdivision of Jimmy Wells', if you can cut through it up to get there.
Why don't we ask Julie to work on that and come back with how many we keep, and what, let's vacate all of it? Are you, I don't care if one of you, whoever's gonna do that, that's fine. We're gonna put together a study.
Yeah, I'll try to have something in the next council meeting detailing all the alleyways and proposed roadways that we currently have to dig to, and we'll try to be in the process of vacating those. Let's see here. I had mentioned I was hoping to have something about the roads coming up at this meeting. And the one thing that I do know is that for us to fix the roads properly, we need more money. We have fifty thousand dollars in our budget for this year, and that's nowhere near what Mr. Sam Phillips sent me a quote for. To properly fix the roads need to be fixed right now. We're about halfway through this fiscal year. At some point in time in the near future, I think we need to really sit down and maybe have a budgetary workshop, go over where we are, where we're planning on going, and see how much money we can come up with to do as much road resurfacing this year as possible. I'm not going out of date right now. It's something that we need to look at. I know we got some issues with our accountant right now, that she may not have full availability to come to a workshop for us right now. So we also have to keep that in mind about, about her, her availability. But let's have that on top of our mind, trying to think of when we can take a longer look at our budget. We're down a few positions or people in city hall right now. And there is the possibility that it may stay that way. We may post something, may not, may bring in somebody part-time. At one point in time, there was a proposal put forward, I think it may have been just in an email, to initiate an intern program at city hall through Northeast College. I think this would be an opportunity time to start exploring that. Does anyone have any recommendations upon that, or any thoughts on that matter also?
Well, the mayor is actually the one that came up with the idea, what was it, two years ago, maybe, that sent it out? I think it's a good idea. I'm not for, there's not, I don't know of any state municipality off the top of my head, intern that gets paid, that get class credit. So I know that federal interns get paid, but as far as state, I don't know of any. So it would be working with professors to get class credit and what have you.
I know at one point in time, that the Ransville Library had an intern program through Northeast. And interns would come there and work at different periods. I don't know the exact time that it ran, but we have had a history of having an intern program here in the city. So that may help out some, just with the general workload in city hall. Because technically, right now, we're down two individuals in the city hall. We currently do not have a person function as the treasurer, and we don't have anybody working as a city planner slash grant writer. And of course, before we do anything with those positions, that's where the budget workshop would also help out in seeing which ones we can fill, if we can do them part-time or so forth, and what kind of savings we can have right now. But for actual voting purposes, I don't think I have anything for the meeting, and I'll just be quiet for a moment.
Five minutes after, so we can move on to the meeting. Meeting will come to a conclusion.
Present.
Hold, here. Ledbetter?
Here.
Freeman?
Here.
Lingerfeld?
Here.
Check out the minutes from the last meeting.
Yes. Ms. Kelly presented them to us earlier today, and we read over them. I'd like to make the motion that we accept the minutes as presented and dispense with the reading thereof.
I second that.
Motion by Graham to dispense with the reading and the previous presentation, second by Ledbetter. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Really, the swing of names probably needs to be at the end of the, you know, just to move the meeting till Thursday. Is that what we'll do? Let the closing of the meeting be Thursday? Or do you want us to have a special meeting?
Probably the easiest, huh?
Well, I did forget this in the actual workshop on the bill that we need to sign off on. We had a Bible bust at the swimming pool, so we had no idea anything about, took, basically flooded everything towards the shop. Twenty-four hundred and twenty-eight dollars and thirteen cents, and Sammy went and met with Donnie, and they cut the bill down to fifteen hundred dollars. Luckily, it kinda offset as much rain as we've had. We haven't had to use any water, had to fill the drain. They would normally take that up, so it's kinda washed itself out, but that's just over the limits. So I'm gonna make sure to bring that to everybody's attention, that whenever we sign deals, we need to sign off on it. And then I wanted to say about passing a resolution number zero four twenty fifteen. I mean, it's a resolution declaring personal property surplus and oriented disposition of the same.
I second.
Motion by Freeman to pass resolution four twenty fifteen, second by Ledbetter. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
That's all I have.
I just make a motion that we are able to, I have drafted this letter. Let me do this, that's the best way to do this motion. I just make a motion to approve this letter to be sent to all applicants from city hall. That's it.
I'll second that motion.
Motion by Ledbetter, second by Graham. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
That's all I have.
I have nothing to vote on. Julie?
I have nothing to vote on. I did have one question. We need to give Ms. Fraser the bill to sign the checks. Does that need to be in a formal resolution? Okay, we'll present that resolution at the next meeting. I have nothing to spend my time on.
I make a motion that we pay the bills.
I'll second.
Motion by Ledbetter to pay the monthly bills, second by Lingerfeld. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
So I make a motion to adjourn the meeting. How do you word that?
At the conclusion of the meeting, we're running James on Thursday.
No, he gave me certain wording. I make a motion that I postpone the adjournment of this meeting till Thursday, April twenty-third. Am I on that date? I'm sorry, at four o'clock. Adjourn meeting till Thursday, April twenty-third at four o'clock.
I'll second it, I think.
I'm sorry.
Motion by Ledbetter, second by Freeman. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Well, he gave the wording and I ran along with him. Yeah, it would've been the same, I'm sorry. So I would've let stick me here, but this is.